And have the clerk call the roll.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Trul.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
And Kittleson and Swadley are absent in excuse, so we have ten alders present tonight. Thank you. Are there any communications from alderpersons this evening? Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to inform the community that Sustainable Stoughton recently did some collection for some donations for the disaster relief for the Texas hurricane Harvey, and they collected $1,205 from community members, and we really appreciate that. And if anybody is interested in further donations, they can just make a check out to the American Red Cross and send it to either them or Sustainable Stoughton. And Sustainable Stoughton is at 209 Harrison Street in Stoughton. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I thank you to our own alderperson Sid for helping out with the Red Cross down in Houston, Texas.
Yeah, speech.
And you want to tell us a little bit about your experience?
(applause). Your Honor, I was there for ten days, and it was a very memorable, kind of tiring experience. We had up to, well, there were over 10,000 people in our shelter, which I was in charge of COTS, Red Cross COTS, in our third day of being open. We really provided a lot of help to our folks. We had a whole bunch of people from Wisconsin that went down, and so I was really happy to be there, really happy to be back, and I appreciate all your support.
Thank you very much for everything you do.
You're welcome.
We appreciate that.
And I have one more thing, too, if that's okay. I just came from the WRA and at the Potawatomi in Milwaukee, where our own Peter Sphim is now Chair of the Wisconsin Realtors Association. I rushed back for this council meeting, but I just wanted to mention that four of our officers from our own police department were there doing a color guard, Nate Hartwig, Carson Hooper, Cole Sargent, and Bob Miller, and they did an unbelievable job. I was so proud of these men, they had, they did the color, presented the colors for the flag celebration, and they really did Stoughton proud, and I just had to say that.
Very nice, thank you. And thanks to the Stoughton Police Department.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Any other communications? Otherwise, I do have a proclamation that I would, I'd like to read. Our proclamation tonight begins, "Whereas there are 267 local chambers of commerce serving villages, towns, and cities throughout Wisconsin. Whereas the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce has over 250 members working together to promote commercial development in Stoughton. Whereas the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce also promotes tourism and other community events. Whereas chambers are critical community partners and problem solvers with the unique ability to work with stakeholders from both the private and public sectors. Whereas chambers do not always receive the recognition and credit they deserve for making our communities a better place to live, work, and play. Therefore, I, Donna Olson, Mayor of the City of Stoughton, proclaim September 2017 as Chamber of Commerce Month throughout the City of Stoughton, and I commend this observance to all of our citizens." And Laura is here tonight, our Stoughton Chamber Executive Director. Thank you, Laura, for all that you do as well.[313.02][313.04](applause). Okay, and you're going to need to get your pencils out, because we have some Committee of the Wholes coming up, beginning tomorrow night, Wednesday, September 13th. We have a RDA Joint Committee of the Whole at 6:00 PM in our EMS training room, and this will be, everyone is invited to come and speak during the public comment period. It will also be televised live on WSTO, again, at our EMS training room. And then Thursday, September 28th, we will have a Committee of the Whole at 6:00 PM here in council chambers, and this will be a presentation of our Public Works facility, the new Public Works facility that's being designed, and that as well will be televised live on WSTO. We have some budget meetings in October. We all are aware of those dates coming up. And October 3rd is a City of Stoughton Community Fun Night. We struggled with what to call it, but it's going to be fun. All of our city departments and leadership team members will be there to welcome the public, talk a little bit about their departments, and have some popcorn, cotton candy, some bucket truck rides. The convincer, is the convincer coming?
We hope so.
That sounds ominous, but the convincer will be coming. Come check that out. Ole will be there to demonstrate how he doesn't like bad guys, right?
How he works.
How he works, there we go. And that's kind of scary if you haven't seen him attack like that before. That's an experience. So October 3rd, and that is from four to seven PM. So we'd like to see you all there. We'll move on, then, to our public comment period tonight. I don't have anyone registered to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak at the public comment period? Seeing none, we'll, I'm sorry. Yes, oh, thank you. I'm Matt, I missed, went right over you, I apologize. Our city attorney, I would like to give us an update regarding the project review at 305-315 East Main Street. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Your Honor. And you have in your packet a memorandum I prepared following the meeting, two meetings ago, where we had a discussion about a number of issues relating to the project review process for this particular parcel. And the council asked me to evaluate some additional issues relating to that process. And in my memo, I summarized my conclusions as follows. First, I concluded that the applicants are entitled to have the application they submitted on January 24, 2017, processed in accordance with the regulations that were in effect at that time, notwithstanding the adoption of the moratorium that was adopted in March of 2017. However, there were at least two elements of that application that were problematic and that may make it, as a practical matter, not possible to approve that particular application. One, the January 24 application was incomplete, and, two, that application said that the intended use of the property was to make it available to the public for park-like uses, which, for reasons I discussed in more detail at the last time we talked about this, is not an allowable use under the zoning code. So for those reasons, although the applicants are entitled to have that particular application reviewed based on the law that was in effect back in January, as a practical matter, it may be difficult for them to get approval of that application. That was conclusion number one. Conclusion number two, we evaluated the validity of the moratorium that was adopted by this council on March 12, and concluded that it is a valid and enforceable moratorium. I further concluded that the city, under that particular moratorium, the city cannot process amendments, proposed amendments, to that January 24 application that are presented to the city after that moratorium was adopted. And you may recall, that was a key element of our discussion, was could the applicants at this time modify their application, in particular with, for example, a landscaping plan, and seek approval at this stage of that amended application? And my opinion is no. Finally, well, and that really ties into my last conclusion, which is that, as a practical matter, so the plant commission on April 10 approved the January 24 application on the condition that the applicants come in with a landscaping plan, and that that had to be approved as well. And given the moratorium, in my view, while that moratorium is pending, they cannot come in and change their application and say, please approve this amended application now. I think the moratorium effectively prevents that from happening. The moratorium itself was adopted, as I understand it, in order to create time for the city to review and potentially modify its ordinances relating to historic preservation. I met with the Historic President, I'm sorry, the Landmarks Commission, I think I last met with them in June, and went through a series of issues that they could consider dealing with. They made a number of decisions at that time, but they still had some additional issues they wanted more time to work on. I've not met with them since that meeting, although they are scheduled to meet again later this month, I believe, and they have asked me to come to that meeting. And so it may be that at that meeting, they will complete their work and be able to forward their recommendations on to council, so that the council can then decide what, if any, changes to make to the city's ordinances. And once that process is completed, then I think the expectation is that moratorium would be lifted. I have communicated with the Chair of the Landmarks Commission and suggested that I think it's important that that process be completed as soon as possible. A moratorium like this is something that I think is intended to be of a limited duration and temporary, and so the sooner we get that done, the better in my mind, so that we can move forward with people's business. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Sure, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any questions at this time. Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Our consent agenda tonight consists of the August 22nd, 2017 council minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
So motion by Engelberger, second by Mijaski. Does any alderperson wish to remove or make any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Old business begins this evening with ordinance 11, 2017, coming from our planning commission. This comes for a second reading. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Plant Commission brings forth ordinance 11-2017 to repeal and remove Appendix F, including all references of the City of Stoughton Municipal zoning ordinance, and I would move approval.
Second.
So motion by Trul, second by Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you see in the packet, folks, this is really cleaning up some of the applications. Rodney and Michael have had a chance to go back and continue to look at some of the documents that, some of the checklist that people are asked to fill out as a part of the various approval requests that they have, that come before the council, and they've identified a number of these as being outdated and difficult to use. And so it's with that in mind that we recommend cleaning, again, eliminating these specific checklists. Again, it is not going to change any of the requirements that applicants will have, but it, again, some of these things were very outdated. And Rodney, if you'd care to comment additionally?
Yeah, it's cumbersome having the checklist included in the code. The applications and the narrative of the zoning code require the submittals, but you'll recognize a number of things in there that certainly don't seem like they're necessary to have codified. For example, enumerating the requirement to have 20 hard copy paper documents, when electronic features are what we're all utilizing today. So that's just one very simplified aspect of the, having these codified in the appendix, whereas we still require the submittals of the appropriate documentation, and the narrative of the code tells what has to be submitted.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Resolution 133 of 2017 comes back to us as a request by Attorney Dregney. So I'll let you start that one off, if you would please, Matt.
I apologize, where are we?
Resolution 133, 2017, relating to the conveyance of real property and payment of impact fees.
Page 6.
Yeah. This is just to extend the deadline to close by a short period of time to allow us to finish up some things that need to be finished up. This is the, for the scollan easement? It's not actually an easement anymore, it's an actual conveyance of property, and there are some title issues that are being cleaned up, and we just didn't have time to get them cleaned up before the currently established closing date, so this would provide some additional time.
Are there any questions or comments regarding, no changes to what it is, simply extends that closing deadline to enable the paperwork to be completed?
Is this for the?
Alderperson Hirsch.
For the bike trail?
For the bike trail. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it's clear.
Sure, Alderperson O'Connor.
Do you need a motion for that?
We do.
To do what?
Approve the resolution.
Approve Resolution 133, which?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Trul, second by Jensen. Further comments or questions? Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we're just voting on extending the deadline?
That's the only thing?
Yep.
For the closing, yeah.
Correct.
No changes to it.
No changes at all, no.
I think it's like extending it a month.
October.
Yep. Further comments or questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. New business begins with Resolution 129 of 2017, coming from our Public Safety Committee. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth Resolution 129-2017, approving the appointment of Stephanie Wetzel as the agent for Pick 'n Save, store number 6390, and I would move approval.
Second.
So motion by Trul, second by Mijaski. I'm sorry, Engelberger. Alderperson Trul.
Again, so straightforward change in agent.
Pretty straightforward. Are there any questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Resolution 130 of 2017 comes from our Public Safety Committee. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Public Safety brings forth Resolution 130-2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue a Class A fermented malt beverage license and a Class A liquor license, cider only, to QuickTrip Inc., doing business as QuickTrip, store number 967, located at 2400 Robie Road, and I would move approval.
Motion by Alderperson Trul, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen. Alderperson Trul.
Again, you can see the information, this is for the, what will be the new QuickTrip. Again, this is the former PDQ store.
Okay, thank you. Yep, I think that's the clarification we were looking for, is the new, the old PDQ store, new QuickTrip store. Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just question, wondering what the effective date is for that?
As I recall, it was like the first week of October.
So it's happening pretty quick here.
October 13th.
Okay. Thank you. Further comments or questions? Alderperson Bartlett.
Certified letter from QuickTrip mentions the PDQs that they took over. How do those, they have to reapply for those licenses, is that correct?
We're all going to look at the clerk, too.
The PDQ they took over on Robie Road, and, you know, do those licenses don't transfer today, is that correct?
No, no, the license isn't transferable between the two entities, so what QuickTrip has done is they have applied for that license as if it was a new license for them. So PDQ will continue to carry their license until October 12th.
But this is, this is that same license bill?
It's brand new for QuickTrip. It's so, the PDQ store is currently licensed in the same way, but this will be new for the QuickTrip.
So if they want to license, relicense that PDQ they took over, they'll have to come back to get a second license for that one? This is just for the new one, is that correct?
No, no.
I'm sorry, this is the PDQ on Robie Road.
Okay, correct.
That's what I was apologizing for.
Yep.
As opposed to the new one in the KTPW.
Okay.
Yep, that was confusing, that's my clarification as well. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one other question for Lana, for the clerk. There's a, I don't know, a limit, or at some point you can run out of giving licenses, there's only so many? Can you tell us where we're at with that right now?
So currently, the city has a limit on Class A fermented malt beverages, and it's one per 1,000 population, and we currently have 13 that we can use. Of those 13, we have issued seven. And this is a little different, because PDQ currently has a Class A fermented malt beverage license, and they're going to be surrendering their license, and QuickTrip will be issued there. So basically, it's, they're taking over the license, but not necessarily.
I didn't know we had a limit on Class A.
Just the fermented malt beverage.
We have that as established as a local limit.
Yes, we do.
Is that a state statute that limits that?
That's per our ordinance.
Under state law, there's a limit on combination Class B licenses, which is for, say, a bar. I didn't know we had a limit on Class A here.
Yes, we do.
Lana knows her stuff. Thank you, Lana.
Did we repeat that we're at 12? We have 13, and we're at 12? Or 13, and around 13?
Yep, so we have a total of 13, and we have issued seven of those 13.
Oh, okay.
So we have more available to us.
Okay.
And that's the only one that's limited?
Per our ordinance, that's the only one that's limited. Like Matt said, the tavern licenses, the Class B combinations are limited by state statute, but our ordinance.
And where are we at on that? We're pretty close on that, aren't we?
On the Class B combination?
Yeah.
We have 16 regular licenses, all 16 regular licenses have been issued, and then we have additional eight reserve licenses. Of those eight, three reserve licenses have been issued, so we have five reserve licenses available to us.
And those cost $10,000 apiece.
Correct.
Thank you. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Lana, actually, I would ask, why don't you send out to all the council folks the listing you prepared at the end of, or at the, a month or so ago, when you had the breakdown of where all the licenses were?
I'm sure.
That you're giving us at Public Safety. So we'll get that out to everybody.
Yeah, that certainly helps.
Thank you.
So I have a motion by Alderperson Trul, second by Alderperson Jensen, to approve Resolution 130 of 2017. Seeing no more questions, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Resolution 131 of 2017 comes from our Public Safety Committee. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. We bring forth Resolution 131-2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue a Class A fermented malt beverage license and a Class A liquor license, cider only, to Aldi's Inc., doing businesses, Aldi, store number 305, located at 1399 US Highway 51, and I would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Trul, second by Jensen. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, this is for the new Aldis that will be opening up later on this fall. Just as a point of reference, we did have extensive discussion with the folks from Aldi regarding additional ability to sell wine and have some challenges in terms of what type of a permit we could actually issue them. So at this time, the Public Safety Committee did not recommend moving forward on that, but they have a relatively limited amount of beer in their stores. They do, just an FYI, they are sold, it is sold at room temperature, so again, reducing some of the impulse.
Yep. Thank you. Comments or questions regarding Resolution 131? All those in favor, aye.
Who?
Aye.
Oh, we're backing up here.
I didn't think we had a motion yet, did we?
Yep, we did. Motion by Trul, second by Jensen.
Okay, I guess I do have a question, then.
We'll allow that.
Are we approving just the license, or are we also approving the layout of the store?
Nope.
Just the license. Is that coming later, or what?
Alderperson Trul, I'll let you speak to what happened at Public Safety and the discussion there.
It was just the license.
Because they, just the license, and if I can, correct me when I go wrong, but because they're being approved the Class A, which is beer as well as cider, it's similar to a QuickTrip, so they don't have a store in a store. That's why Public Safety felt comfortable moving forward, similar to how it's available. Their hours of operation are limited.
So this is a different license than Pick 'n Save or Walmart?
Yes.
And we don't have to worry about the layout of the store?
Not with this one.
We did have a discussion about it, again, but because of the hours of operation, I believe they indicated they're going to be nine to nine, or something in that order, so that we did have a discussion about having the items up front. And again, we had much discussion about, they carry their own label products, and as I recall, they proposed, indicated that the actual store space is like 20.
See, there's a map within our packet, but?
Yeah, I mean, so it was fairly limited?
Well, I'm looking at the map.
Yep, please come.
Is the map locked? Is it lockable? Is it a closed thing, or is it just open shelves?
We do have a representative, I didn't mean to interrupt, we do have representatives of Aldis here, so welcome. If you'd like to introduce yourself and?
Folks, how are you doing? I'm Tom Howell, Director of Real Estate for Aldi. Appreciate having us on tonight, and we are planning to have a grand opening on November 9th here coming up, and we have determined that our layout will be an eight-foot section of beer. So that's 24 square feet of the store. It'll be a very small section, and in regards to that range, it is private label brand, beer products with their own exclusive brands, and we do carry regional product with Spotted Cow, and that would be our only range of products that we will carry. So it's a very small section, it's not a refrigerated section as well. And we are still in discussions for other possible ideas with the chief and with the committee as well in the future.
I have a question for Alderperson Johnson, and then I'll come back. Michael?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just was going to mention that he was here.
Okay, great, thank you. Alderperson Engelberger.
Okay, so I guess my question is, it sounds like it's just beer on a shelf, just like the pop would be, or soda or whatever, and how do you lock that up at nine o'clock or whatever?
We don't, we're actually, our hours of operations are 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Sunday.
It's closed.
We go live with those new hours of operation coming here in October with all of our stores in the state of Wisconsin, so we operate within the timeframe of allowable, sellable hours within state statutes, so we don't go past that nine o'clock timeframe.
Okay, then I have a question for the chief. If, how do we compare to the other convenience stores? Do we have beer on the shelf at the convenience stores? I thought everything was behind locked coolers.
No, actually, most of our convenience stores have it in open coolers. They're selling product that's cold for consumption right away. The only difference here is that this is on the shelf. It would be much more related to, I think, what Walgreens has. Their beer is on a shelf, similar to what Walmart used to be in the old store, or it was simply on the shelf.
Okay.
Sure, Alderperson Hirsch.
If I remember right, it's when you go to the other license, where you have the wine and the other liquor that we have stored within a store that's lockable, like Walmart, Pick 'n Save, can't remember who else.
And again, also, based on, if the store were to be open past nine o'clock at night, then there would be a need to have it locked up from that standpoint as well?
Right. Further comments or questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Thank you.
Welcome.
Resolution 132 of 2017 is a resolution declaring the need for the Housing Authority of Dane County, Wisconsin, to exercise its powers within the City of Stoughton. We talked about this last night, so I'll hand it over first to Alderperson Trul to talk about Plant Commission.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Plant Commission brings forth and recommends that the council adopt Resolution 132-2017, a resolution declaring the need for the Housing Authority of Dane County, Wisconsin, to exercise its powers within the City of Stoughton, Wisconsin. Move approval.
There's a motion by Trul, and a second by Engelberger. And Rob is here tonight, if you'd like to come on up and talk to us about your plans? That'd be great, thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Rob Dick. I'm the Executive Director of the Dane County Housing Authority. I appreciate your time and consideration of our resolution on your agenda. The reason for the resolution is that the Housing Authority is looking to convert and rehabilitate 24 units of public housing here in Stoughton. That would be the Maple Tree Elderly Building and Town Homes on Han- That would be the Maple Tree elderly building and townhomes on Hanson Road, as well as townhomes on Row Street. Those units are all in HUD's public housing program, which, which Congress has problems keeping funding up for. Unfortunately, funding for public housing in Dane County has been cut by 47% since 2010 in actual dollars, not in inflation adjusted dollars. And they have been talking about another 67% cut for 2018. So it's made it real hard for the Housing Authority to keep up. So, but HUD has created a program called the Rental Assistance Demonstration, which allows us to convert the units from the public housing funding model to the Section 8 project-based rental assistance. And that one has more stable funding. It also, public housing is co-owned by the Housing Authority and HUD, and so there's very limited things that we can do. We can't take out a mortgage, we can't sell the property, we can't change any of the composition. Going through the Rental Assistance Demonstration removes HUD's ownership from the project, gives us much more flexibility and much more local control over what we want to do with the housing. As part of the conversion, we are looking to do about $1.1 million worth of rehab on the 24 units here in Stoughton and the 20 units in Mesa Maney. And I apologize if I am winded, because I set a record getting from the Village of Mesa Maney, meeting at 6:00 down here, at 7:00, and no tickets.
Paul, I was going to say, don't tell the police chief.
It was close. But, no, I got, but, anyway. So it's going to be about $25,000 per unit in rehab, very similar to the type and style of rehab that we are completing on the Vernon project. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. So we're going to look to see siding, roofing, windows, depending on how much money we have. We also want to do kitchen cabinets, countertops, flooring, some bath upgrades. Luckily, our mechanicals are in real good shape, structurally, the buildings are in real good shape, but we want to be able to update them to the point where we're providing a higher quality product to the residents of Stoughton. We're not going to change any of the income designations, any of the eligibility. We're going to do our best to make sure that everybody that is currently in the project gets back in the project after it's rehabbed and provide a better quality of affordable housing.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Alderperson Hirsch, and then Boersma.
Thank you for explaining that and doing all the work. So the residents that are currently in those facilities, where are they going to go when you're doing all these renovations? I mean, that's kind of a concern.
Sure, and so for the most part, we're, we're going to try to work around residents where we can, similar to what we've done on Vernon. However, I anticipate it's going to be less, less intensive a rehab, so it won't be as, as cumbersome. However, we're still going to have the same policy in place, so that residents that need to be relocated temporarily due to a medical issue or health issues, we will, we will honor that.
And they would contact you to make those arrangements?
Well, they would contact the property managers, and the property managers and I review them, but yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Alderperson Boersma.
Rob, thank you for coming tonight to explain that. And if you could just, just thumbnail briefly, because we have our own housing authority here in Stoughton, and how does that square with your, your Housing Authority of Dane County? Is there overlap or not, or is one of the reasons for having to appear and present this because we have our own housing authority? I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So the Dane County Housing Authority, obviously, our jurisdiction area is the entire county, but there are three other local housing authorities in Dane County. The Housing Authority of Stoughton, DeForest, and then the CDA of the City of Madison. So we do have overlapping jurisdictions, and in order for a county housing authority to undertake a housing project within a municipality, we need a resolution from the municipality declaring that there is a need for the county housing authority to operate. And then similarly, the local housing authority has to also pass a resolution declaring that there is a need for the county housing authority to operate. So even though we have overlapping jurisdiction, because you have a local entity, we need to make sure that what we're looking to do fits with your plans and your desires and, and fits well with the plan of your housing authority. The Dane County Housing Authority received a resolution similar to this back in the 70s in order to, in order to undertake the, the public housing project. However, that resolution doesn't have all the statutory language that's required for what we're trying to do now, because it's a little more complicated. We're financing the, this project through DCHA-issued housing finance bonds, the 4% low-income housing, federal low-income housing tax credit, as well as, we're also getting a nice grant from, from Dane County itself. But in order to, to have the, the language that the lawyers require to make sure that we can issue those bonds within the city of Stoughton, we need to update this resolution.
If I could just continue with one. I recall you did come for a meeting with, with our local housing authority, probably a year and a half or so ago, maybe two years ago, to talk about this project, and I think you were well received by our Dane County Housing, our, our Stoughton Housing Authority. And so, so we were aware of it from the Housing Authority position.
And the Housing Authority will meet next week, Tammy?
The 21st at 2:30. So I can send you that information, if you could attend.
That'll do everything. So that'll be to formalize, to formalize the.
Resolution.
The resolution and, and that we won't have an objection to that.
Yeah, because it has to be planning, the local housing authority, and then, and then the council as well.
Correct. Thank you. Further questions? Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank Rob also for what you guys do with the Housing Authority throughout the county. And last night, it came up a question, you know, whether because the Planning Commission had to approve this, do you still have to go through the Planning Commission processes like any other construction? And the answer is yes. But, and this is kind of a statutory process that requires, so.
And in truth, we have to get much more approval, more approvals than, you know, if we wanted to go out and buy a single-family home in Stoughton, by state, by those statutes, we need to come before the Planning Commission, even just to buy a single-family home. So, but that's good, because then we're making sure we're getting local input and making sure that what we're doing fits with what you want to see in Stoughton, because we certainly don't want to undertake a project that either your housing authority could do on its own or, you know, as a, as a, as a group that you don't want to see. So I think that's good to have that communication and make sure that we're all working in tandem.
Thank you. Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I was, I was going to say two things. One, there is, within the packet is a letter from their, I assume, the Bondi Council, just reaffirming the fact that it had to go to Plan, Council, and Housing Authority when it comes up. And again, as, as Alderman Engelberger just commented, things have to come back to us. And then for the record, since I didn't see it anywhere else in here, the Maple Tree Apartments that we're talking about, the addresses are 1650 to 1680 Hanson Road and 409 to 421 Row Street.
Correct, thank you. All right, without further questions, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. This motion carries. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Drive safely.
Thanks for coming.
All right, I would entertain a motion at this time to go into closed session.
Oh, Mayor, I move to go into closed session per State Statute 1985, parent one, parent E, to consider the acquisition of property for the proposed Public Works facility, ultimately reconvene into open session to take action on matters discussed in closed session and to consider any items on the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by O'Connor, second by Trul. Move vote by Roco.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mijeski.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlet.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Are we ready? Okay, we'll reopen for the regular course of business.